So, welcome to the Sex and Gender Equity Across the HIV Research Landscape Panel. Today, we have a few different learning objectives. We're going to be examining the intersection of sex, gender, and HIV research, both the opportunities and the challenges, trying to talk about different ways to incorporate both qualitative and quantitative methods in different, unique contexts, and to see how we can take that information and integrate it into our own HIV research programs. Also be discussing some of the difficult policy changes that have come up recently globally, and how we can potentially navigate some of those. And so, I just want to thank our knowledge keeper for opening the conference in a great way, Angela. We really thank you for doing that for us. And none of our speakers today have any conflicts to disclose. I also want to thank CIHR for a planning and dissemination grant that is helping to fund this session and some subsequent sessions that will follow today's panel discussion. And we're going to get you to participate all the way throughout. So, we have a mentee. If we can get our phones out, the lighting's really good, so I can actually see all of you. So, there'll be opportunities throughout with specific questions that we want to hear what you've experienced within your own groups, your personal experiences, and it's also a good way to ask questions throughout. So, the Q and A will be open throughout, and there'll be some key moments that you can also ask your questions. So, the questions you ask throughout will be held on to until the end, and if there are no questions in the room, then we'll go to those afterwards. So, feel free to put your questions in there, as well as there will be opportunity at the end to ask your questions verbally to our panelists. And just to introduce some of the people who've been contributing to the session today, so my name is Chanelle Jangra. I'm a PhD candidate from University of Manitoba. I've had some mentors on this that have really helped me out, so thank you to Dr. Marissa Becker and Dr. Keith Folk, also based at the University of Manitoba, and thank you to Samantha Kirby, who's a master student at University of Manitoba, who will be helping moderate all of our mentee questions. And so with that, I'll get to introducing our panelists. So, Dr. Carmen Logi She-Her is the Canada Research Chair in Global Health Equity and Social Justice with Marginalized Populations, professor at the Factor in Awash Faculty of Social Work University of Toronto, adjunct professor at the United Nations University Institute for Water, Environment, and Health, and adjunct scientist at Women's College Hospital. Her research advances understanding of hazardous social and physical environments associated with HIV vulnerabilities, including intersecting stigma, extreme weather, and resource insecurities. Her current studies focus on HIV prevention and care cascades in Uganda, Kenya, Tanzania, and Canada with people with HIV, refugee youth, LGBTQ communities, sex workers, and Indigenous youth. Dr. Zuma Rueda She-Her is an MD/PhD Associate Professor and Canada Research Chair in Sexually Transmitted Infection Resistance and Control at the University of Manitoba. She leads the ExpoZone Lab and the Altogether for Ideas team. Her research in Colombia and Canada includes tuberculosis among people deprived of liberty in Colombian prisons, the etiology and diagnostics of pneumonia in children and adults that required hospitalization, and the intersection of HIV pneumonia STIs and tuberculosis among marginalized populations. All research with a syndemic and intersectional lens rooted in community-based research. She strongly believes in research into action, sharing evidence for policy and decision-making. Dr. Jessica Proder She-Her is an Associate Professor in the Department of Microbiology and Immunology at Western University in Ontario, Canada, where she holds a Tier Two Canada Research Chair in Genital Immunology and STI Prevention. She also serves as a Director of the Global Health System Master of Health Science Program at Western. Dr. Proder is a longstanding research collaborator with the Raiki Health Sciences Program in Uganda, where she work—her work focuses on promoting the inclusion of people living with HIV in Africa in biomedical HIV research, with a particular emphasis on HIV persistence in women. At Western, her research program investigates the role of genital microbiota in shaping local immune responses with a focus on health and trans and gender diverse individuals. And Dr. Lance T. McCready He-They is an Associate Professor in the Department of Leadership, Hire and Adult Education at University—at—I'm losing my place already. At Ontario Institute for Studies in Education and Director of the Transitional Year Program at University of Toronto. His research and program development work explores education, health, and the welfare of Black families, youth, and adults in urban communities and schools. He's a principal investigator of the Black gender expansive youth and Black youth leaving care studies, and co-investigator of the Black CAP Get a Kit Study. He received the Ledwig and Estelle Jess Memorial Human Rights Prize, is a distinguished research scholar, and an Excellence in Education Leadership Award winning. So, please join me in welcoming our panelists. So, first, we're going to start with defining and integrating sex and gender into HIV research. So, sex and gender are often used interchangeably, yet they refer to distinct concepts within unique impacts and health outcomes. So, Dr. McCready, how do you define and differentiate sex and gender in your HIV research, and why is it important to address both separately and together?
Good afternoon. I didn't know I was going to be the first person to speak. That seems kind of inappropriate, but I'll just put out some basic things, and then we'll build. I mean, I basically think that sex—and actually, I just want to say, some of my remarks are based on my experience of my research program, which you heard a bit about. Also, I just cycled off serving on the Institutional Advisory Board for the Institutes for Gender and Health, and have been sort of a longtime community-based researcher. And in that work—and I also feel like a lot of my teaching in women and gender studies, and adult education, and actually, in urban education informs my responses this afternoon. So, sex is thought to be sort of the categorization or the—that refers to—or is based on biological characteristics, and gender is thought to be the socially constructed sort of category that refers to often roles, ideas, belief associated with—gender categories could be masculinity, femininity, transgender identity, et cetera. So, for me, I'm not really sure that I really operationalize too much sort of sex in biological sex in my research, but I do think a lot about gender and sort of operationalize that in my research with Black gay by MSM that I'll refer to as Black GBM, and health literacy in terms of the context of obtaining the information that we need to maintain our health, as well as information about health systems, how—I—the particular ways of identifying as a man, as well as the structural conditions that sort of set the stage for what kind of information that I might seek about sort of my own personal health, and also about sort of health systems. So, that's just a place, I guess, to begin part of this conversation.
I'm loving everybody's participation already, so we can see both the sex aspects and the gender aspects coming up already. I really like the genes and genes. It's a perfect way to phrase it. Did any other panelists want to comment on that? We can—
I just want to start saying thank you, Chanelle, and congratulate you for your leadership as a trainee, the future generation of researchers, or whatever your career path takes you. And thank you to the mentors for supporting this initiative. I just want to mention that personally, in epidemiology, it's very important, both variables, in particular, for example, in the prairie provinces, when usually the population databases or in the clinical healthcare settings, traditionally, it has been collected sex, but only females and males, not intersex. They were included recently. And gender has been evolving definition, but one thing that is important is essential to collect both and report in our research both information, because we learned that, for example, HIV in the prairie provinces disproportionately affect more females compared, for example, to the rest of Canada. So, these little nuances allow us to understand where the differences are, but not only the differences between females, males, intersex, or by gender, women, men, gender diverse people, or the definition that the person used, it's also how sex and gender, what are the structural and social determinants that affect more females, or more males, or more intersex, or more women, men, and gender diverse people?
Yeah, so I think that's a great place to start our session. We're all going to be at different areas of learning. We've rolled out a lot of sex and gender-based learning and analysis in the last five to 10 years, so it's good to acknowledge that we can keep learning and find new ways to incorporate this into our own HIV research program. So, happy to continue doing that throughout this session and afterwards at all. So, thank you, everybody, for already participating. And so we'll have just a general what are your thoughts open every once in a while on screen, so feel free to add more long or short answers if anything pops in your mind. But we'll get on to our second question. So, this one will start with Dr. Proder. So, in terms of, like, despite growing awareness, many studies do fail to incorporate sex and gender considerations effectively. What are some best practices for operationalizing sex and gender in research design, analysis, and reporting? And do you consistently use the same framework, or do you have to tailor it depending on what project you're doing?
Okay, thank you. Maybe I need to move this back for us. Thank you very much. It's really exciting opportunity to be on this panel. So, I'm going to preface this by saying that I speak from a basic science, maybe with a little bit of epidemiology lens, but I think my advice for best practices or my thoughts on best practices for operationalizing this is to think about your research question, which sounds very simple, but—so I'm going to start with, so what is sex, anyway? Do we need to—do we need to consider biological sex in the research? Okay, so sex can be your chromosome complement. If you—two Xs are an X and a Y is what we might think of, but of course, there are people who have three Xs, two Xs and a Y, and this is important because there is incomplete—obviously, Y chromosome is a chromosome in and of itself that has genes on it, and also, there's incomplete X inactivation. So, we think, okay, you have two Xs, one of them is inactivated, and it's not expressed, but this is untrue. And up to a quarter of genes on the second X chromosome can also be expressed. We get biolilic expression. So, you literally have twice as much protein of genes that are on that chromosome. And, for example, we may think in immunology research, this is basic science, we don't need to be concerned about what this biological sex of this cell line is, but if you have two X chromosomes, and there are interferon stimulated genes, TLRs on the X chromosome, you may have more expression of that than you would have if you used a different cell line. So, I think what's important is to say, you know, what is my research question, and make sure that we are accounting for it in it. So, if you're enrolling participants into a study, and it is important to know if they are exposed to estrogen, you can't just ask, are you male or female, right? You need to ask more questions than that. Were you assigned male or female at birth? Have you ever been diagnosed with an intersex condition? Are you taking exogenous hormones? You may have someone who presented your study, very masculine presentation, but they're carrying two X chromosomes, and when they were a child, they may have been exposed to estrogen. So, I think my advice for operationalizing sex and gender in research is to think very hard about what your research question is, and how sex and gender may affect that outcome, and then ask the relevant questions, which are often much more complex than just what is your sex, what is your gender, to be able to capture that information, that information that you need.
Yeah, thank you so much to my wonderful colleagues. I would just also say, one best practice is to consider the social processes around gender, so we can measure quantitatively, or we can explore qualitatively, gender norms, gender values, gender roles, and gender expectations. We can look at gender inequity, we can look at gender-based stigma, and then we can look at how those are associated with various health outcomes. We can also apply an intersectional perspective, so understanding that your experience of gender is also shaped by other variables and other social categories, such as sexual orientation, and race, income, nationality, so many other things as well. So, I think some of the best practices, you could look at the SGBA plus as a starting point, which just gets you to think, is sex relevant for my research question? Is gender? And then more than just that box, thinking through, well, what does it mean that I'm looking at these, and what are the social processes? So, I'm not looking at, you know, gender or sex as an issue, but I'm actually looking at gender-related processes, maybe gender nonconformity stigma, or gender inequity as the actual issue that needs to be addressed.
This is a follow-up question to—so, I'm wondering how you respond to—because I've been in conversation with a number of basic scientists that would say, like, I don't need to consider gender. What is even considering gender in my research? I do research on sort of mice and look at sort of how, you know, their protein production sort of varies with various drugs, and so mice don't have gender, their sex, their sex differences, but they don't have gender, so why would I—I don't think that gender is really relevant to me, as a basic scientist does research with mice.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to respond to that question. It would be great to get some thoughts on the board, too, but I mean, if you're—so, you know, something that pops into mind immediate—immediately is Mona Luthi's study examining interactions between feminizing hormone therapy and antiretrovirals. So, if you're, you know, if you're examining the effects of antiretrovirals, and you're in male and female mice, but what if, you know, what about feminizing—the effect of feminizing hormones on male mice, and then layered with antiretrovirals? So, these are things that we can consider. I think if we exclude the idea that—from this is very much from a basic science perspective. So, if we exclude the idea that your gender does not influence things that we—traits or, like, biological processes that we often attribute to sex, like, your gender can affect biological sex. When we think about epigenetic modifications, and sex hormones, and things like that, right? The gender can have an effect on that. If we don't study that in vitro systems and in mice, then we're left with that situation where a clinician says, yeah, you're on—you—I know you've been really doing well on your feminizing hormone therapy, but you need to start this heart medication, and I don't know what the interaction is. There's no research done on that, because basically, trans people were excluded from this research, even from the—from the preclinical stage. So, you better just stop your femini—you better choose. Do you want heart health, or do you—do you need your feminizing hormone therapy, right? And I'm pretty sure I know what a lot of people would choose. So, I think even at that basic science phase, we have to think about equity and inclusivity in our research, our research questions.
Yeah, and I think that's already kind of circling back to one of our previous questions, where thinking about sex and gender, both separately and together, right? Because there is going to be a lot of intersection there, so you have to consider how that is at play, and if we don't collect the data, we can't study it, right? Another thing that came to mind, there is some research that looks at the gender of the basic scientists working on the mice, and then seeing how the mice actually react to a different scientist. So, even if it's not necessarily looking at the actual experiment you're studying, it may still come into play from gender norms, from a scientist's perspective. So, definitely really interesting to think about in that way. And this might actually lead into our next question here about how we balance natural evolution and intentional program design. So, traditional research environments often reinforce power imbalances and disadvantage marginalized communities through hetero patriarchal systems based in colonialism. So, how—in your experience, what sex and gender policies have naturally evolved within your HIV programs to challenge these oppressive environments, and what aspects required more thoughtful structure for successful implementation? And I'll throw this one over to Dr. Logi first.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So, I'd say, one of the more natural practices, coming from the social sciences and from social work specifically, would be doing community-based research. So, understanding that there's different ways of knowing and different forms of data collection that matter, and understanding about the importance of engaging the people that you're working with from—throughout the entire research process. So, I think, at least in our practice and our team, we've been doing community-based research for a long time, and also doing mixed methods data collection, and—but I think, you know, I've been more recently reading about data feminism, and what does that actually mean when we think about the data? And when we think about—it's actually—the aim of the research is always social justice, but that—the process of collecting the research should also be done in a way that doesn't cause harm to the data collectors or to the participant. And so, what that has meant is been doing a lot of intersectional stigma training. You know, of course, as part of community-based research, you're developing the tools and the instruments with community and pilot testing them, but also just thinking about what are some biases, and doing intersectional stigma training, which we've been doing a lot in our team. Another thing, I think, that needs to be embedded explicitly is a strength-based approach. So, to really not just look at the problems and the issues and the health disparities, but also to intentionally, in your surveys or in your research questions, qualitative guides, is to actually look at, you know, this concept of multi-systemic resilience. Look at the resilience within communities, within individuals, within relationships. And if you're not looking for the solutions, you might just—I always tell this to my students, sometimes you only find what you ask for. So, if you're going to ask people all the problems in their life, they're sure going to tell you that, but you could also ask about the coping, the strategies, and you can measure those quantitatively as well. You can measure different levels of resilience, social support, social cohesion, community empowerment. So, I think we intentionally need to think about, are we painting a picture that's only about problems, or are we also, you know, generating the solutions and knowledge about protective factors by design as well? So, I might just stop there and let my colleagues speak.
Yeah, that makes sense, and like, thinking about in terms of trying to incorporate multiple layers of sex and gender into our programs. I think a lot of people are willing to do it, but might still struggle with understanding the ways to do that in the right way, especially when you are incorporating many different factors. So, in terms of trying to strive to be as inclusive as possible, it can sometimes lead to a lot of complexity. And so, how have we—what situations have we encountered where the attempt to integrate multiple layers of sex and gender considerations resulted in some unintended complications? And how might we mitigate these for other people in the audience, thinking of incorporating this into their research program? So, I'll throw it over to Dr. Rueda.
Thank you, Chanelle. I found that question challenging, because it has multiple approaches. So, I divided in design, analytical approach, and nullance, translation, and exchange. So, from the design, maybe researchers can think that incorporating sex and gender analysis, but I want to emphasize that not only sex and gender, also equity indicators are extremely important. That requires, as Dr. Carmen just mentioned, involve communities. So, sometimes, people may think that that is slow the process, because that require meaningful consultations, requires involve multiple partners, requires that we go to the field and spend time with people and understand their communities, observe what their preferences are, and that require extensive amount of work. So, for example, when I was in prison, I went Monday to Friday, every day for six months, just to try to understand their dynamics. In Manitoba, I spent going to encampments, outreach activities. I joined mobile healthcare clinics, talking to multiple people for over nine months. So, it requires that you spend tons of time in the field. So, that from the—from the research design. So, that requires time, but that requires that we are intentional on what we want to achieve. From the analytical perspective, it requires complex analysis, and I will tie the design with analytical, because it requires transdisciplinary research team. So, the first thing that we need to acknowledge is, we don't know everything. So, we—I just know a piece, so I think the main challenge is how we create transdisciplinary teams that can bring social sciences, basic sciences, for example, experts that allow me to understand things that I—that I wasn't trained for. The other thing that I find very important is to train ourselves and educate ourselves. I'm originally from Colombia, so there are many concepts that I didn't know when I came to Canada. So, is this constant and intentional training of ourselves, our trainees, and creating these transdisciplinary teams that allow us to have multiple layers of approach? And that connect with the analytical piece, where from the statistical point of view, require complex methods. So, for example, ExpoZone requires multi-level analysis, and many other type of analysis that allow us to answer the question in the—in the correct way. The third one is how to communicate the results effectively, and I would say this this is extremely important, and also requires tons of time. I studied epidemiology, and I remember when we were creating the Manitoba HIV Program Report 2018, 2021, we did an extensive community consultation before we published it, to share the results, to ask people what was the best way to share that data, and to develop call to actions. And one of the funny stories was when I did the fancy graphs, no one understood. So, that was such an educational lesson for me, that how we communicate and present the results in an effective way. And the last—the flip side is that— And the last, the flip side is that many people give up to this complexity. So the complexity to reach out to communities, the complexity to create transdisciplinary teams, the complexity of spending time to share how we are going to share the knowledge that we generated in our research. So many people just simplify and answer one specific question. I think the beauty of all of this is let's not oversimplify the problem because the problems clearly have complex questions and because that may hinder the understanding of underlying structural, social, and biological interactions. So I think that is extremely important.
Yeah, and there's a lot of great comments coming up here. So even talking about interviewer research, assistant bias, or interpretation of the sex and gender. So making sure that we're providing the resources for our research teams to be able to learn and understand proper approach. We have multiple comments kind of striking the difficulties when you try to stratify for multiple different groups and how intersectional analysis can get challenging if you're only trying to stratify. So I think that's where you do need to try to, yes, educate yourself and also find people who are experts in that space.
I just wanted to bring up two sort of classic dilemmas that we still, like I still encounter with some of the research that I'm doing. So for instance, we're doing a study of sort of queer youth and social media use and the impact that might have on mental health. So the question becomes like, oh, should we have preformed categories for gender and sexual orientation or should we have write-in categories? So another word, and where sort of youth can sort of fill out sort of however they identify. So we go back and forth on the team a lot because we kind of know what's going to happen if we put in a write-in category, right? That we're going to get like, you know, eight to however many categories young people might write. And then when we try to do, we'll be okay doing our descriptive analyses, but then if we want to do any inferential analyses, we're going to have to deal with, oh, the small boxes, like there are only, you know, four people who identified as pansexual or there were, or various sort of smaller or larger numbers. So I think that that, I don't think that there's a, I don't think there's a standard for that. And I think we were talking before this panel about a lot of that has to do with the context, you know, literally the sort of the regional or the country or context that you're working in. Sometimes it has to do with the city or the specific school that you're working in. But I think while the goal is that we should all be sort of successfully integrating sex and gender science into our research, and arguably, I mean, maybe this is another big question, like should we, our goal be to move beyond the binary of sex and gender? Where it's just sort of male, female, or sort of, you know, masculine, feminine? I think we're kind, I kind of feel like the best practice is to move beyond the binary, but in some cases, maybe we shouldn't move beyond the binary. So that's, that's still a question that I'm left with in terms of looking at specific contexts, you know? When should we strive to move beyond the binary? When should we strive to really have these sort of writing categories where people define their sex and their gender? And what's, what's the, you know, what are the sort of ways of thinking about that?
Yeah, I would say we had a little conversation before and I was saying, in some contexts where I work, it's incomprehensible to have multiple sex and gender categories that you would use in a place like Canada. So when I'm working in refugee camps at the border of South Sudan, we literally use a gender binary because when we're trying to pilot test more than that, it's just not what people want to do and it's not how people are thinking or talking about gender. So I really think that there can be a lot of self-righteousness and judgment from like Western perspectives about you must look at gender beyond a binary and all of these things. But a lot of places where you work, people are like, what? It's, this is not something that somebody would answer in this, you know, context. So I do think that context is key and, you know, I'm all about pushing beyond the binary, but sometimes you have to listen to the people you're working with and be like, okay, this is the way that people can understand and answer these questions on this survey in this specific moment in time in this place, in a way that's safe as well. And so I think it's, you know, do no harm is the core foundation of all of our practices. So doing no harm to the person collecting the data. So if you're asking data about trans issues in a place that's criminalized, you could actually be putting the data collector at harm and then you could also be putting the participant. So it's really being cognizant about there's not a one-size-fits-all approach, which I think was what Lance was also referring to. But it's all about doing no harm and really understanding the context really deeply.
Yeah, that's a really fantastic point. Maybe just to follow up on that. So when you are in a situation where you're protecting the communities that you're working with or with the researchers collecting this information, are you also careful about that language when you publish in case they are then linked to that? Or are you able to be more free in the way that you are publishing that data afterwards?
For the specific question is, that answer is, we need to be very mindful because when we publish, we can, we can create harms. And in many cases, I would say is unintentional. No one wants to harm someone in general, but it doesn't matter. So in this case, what I would say is, I've been evolving. So the first thing is we are not static. We learned and we evolved over the years. Definitely with the process that we have done, particularly here in Canada, in Manitoba, and in Colombia in prisons, one of the main lessons that I realized was how, share what I write, and I don't mean Sulema, I mean the team. What I write and let the team, the opportunity and participants, the opportunity to comment our papers, but also take the opportunity to share with people their research results in a different way. Because we are very academic, so we use a very technical language and we publish in very technical terms. So individualize how you present the data. So how you present in lay terms that people truly understand what your findings are and that truly understand what is sex, what is gender, that truly understand what are those social and structural data that you are presented and that you openly ask how they would like to present, how they would like to modify. And we print copies for them and people, there was a paper that they reviewed six times. So it requires a lot of time. So it requires time, money, investment, but requires determination to do it. So in that sense is that you are open and humble to say, great, great questions, tough questions. I just want to close to mention, we must have tough conversations. And I think in academia, sometimes we avoid those tough conversations and it doesn't help anyone. We must have these challenging questions, tough conversations, follow-up meetings where we can solve all of these challenges.
Yeah, it's definitely a good point about wanting to make sure that we're communicating with the communities that we're speaking to. So whether that's a scientific audience or whether that is community members that we're working with and being mindful of the language we're using, but also just making sure that we're able to communicate the findings in the way that is understood for the community we're working with. Because if we can't get that information back to community or back to the other scientists, how are we going to be able to move forward? And some other comments here that we can't quite see on screen, but talking about integrating sex and gender is challenging with the rigid system. So we have to also tackle shifting power and talking about how that, how the systems also help or challenge integrating these things. So really good feedback from everybody. So thank you for contributing here as well.
I have a good story, if you want, like a success story.
I would love a story, yeah.
So after Uganda passed the anti-homosexuality bill, we removed our sexual orientation question off of a survey, a cohort survey we've been doing for a long time with refugee youth in Kampala. And I met, I went to meet the data collectors, who are all refugees that we've trained as researchers for many years. And they called me out on it. They're like, so we noticed that you removed the sexual orientation question. I said, well, I did that because of the bill and because, you know, I don't want you to be seen as asking these questions and promoting homosexuality and getting in trouble. And they're like, but surely, because this is because we've done so many years of training, stigma reduction training and sensitivity training, and they're so brilliant. But they're like, so can't you add back the question about gender of sex partners? Because then like we wouldn't be getting in trouble because we're not asking about sexual orientation. So this is what happens when you really train your team in the importance of this data around sex and gender. And then you're also able to dialogue about, okay, this is the reason that I was thinking we couldn't do this. And then they come back with solutions of being creative. So do you think we can do some creative resistance? But it really, it needs to be done, I think, on a foundation of, you know, really being on the same page with the same values and the same goals.
Yeah, and I think those relationships only come with trust, right? So it's not easy to just make these connections. It's something that you build over many years. And having people who feel comfortable coming to you when they don't agree with the approach that you thought was serving them in a good way, I think that just speaks to the environment that you're creating within your research program and with the communities that you work with. So I think it's a really good lesson for everybody to remain flexible and, yeah, understand we're all going to make the wrong choice sometimes, right? So it's okay to take that feedback and find a better way forward in the future, right? So maybe we'll move on to thinking about ethical considerations in gender-inclusive HIV research. So ensuring ethical research practices are critical when working with gender diverse populations, particularly regarding consent, data privacy, and cultural sensitivity. So what ethical considerations should be prioritized when conducting HIV research that includes transgender, gender diverse, and other historically excluded populations? Dr. Proctor.
Okay, thanks. I think I'll try to speak about this question from two different perspectives. One is working with trans and gender diverse people in Canada, and the other is working with trans and gender diverse people in Uganda, which are two very different environments. So when we think about it in Canada, we think a lot about two, so thinking about research ethics, what is a risk to the participant? So if there is a risk of their, either their HIV status or their, their, I don't know, like their sex/gender alignment status is maybe, I don't know what the right way to say that is. But, you know, if they're, if they're passing very much as a man and they don't want necessarily their colleagues or other people to know that they were assigned female at birth, then this is an important privacy concern. And so making sure that, so one of the, one of the ways that we deal with this is in our recruitment and enrollment. So, you know, you, if you want to talk to trans men about vaginal dryness and pain, and then asking them to go to the gynecology clinic to provide vaginal samples is not a great idea, right? That is a way that you can potentially do harm. Another way, I think, is if the research form has boxes and you don't fit into the box, that's also a way to do harm, right? So training, thinking about these things, talking to community members and engaging community members in designing research forms and things like that, I think are very important. And thinking about times in the future when, you know, I'm thinking about our colleagues in the United States, where, places where you wouldn't necessarily think this would be a problem and political climates can change. So safeguarding against potential future problems. So switching to Uganda where being, I mean, the homosexuality law has sort of just looped into trans people. And in, and, and working generally with people who are living with HIV in Uganda, one of the things that we try to do is that by participating in the studies, someone can't tell something that you may not want to disclose. And also watching for public advertising. So this is a very different political climate, but I mean, HIV and gender health is global health. So, you know, we're not advertising, we don't have study posters, we use, you know, word of mouth and community-driven enrollment. But then also potentially, if you're, if not excluding people from the study based on their HIV status, right? So, you know, you're reading the consent form and like, oh, you're being asked to participate in this study because you're living with HIV, blah, 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 blah. Does this describe you? And then you're like, no, that person walks out the room. And then their friend who they came with gets to stay in the room. I mean, you just let out a lot of information about your study participants. So I think those are, you know, maybe get us started on some of the ethical considerations for, you know, being able to adequately enroll based on gender diversity and HIV status in research studies.
Yeah, that's definitely something to be very careful about, right? That's, that would definitely be a way to contribute harm. And so moving towards how we also make sure that our community engagement and policies are reflective of real world needs is critical to ensuring HIV research directly benefits the communities that we are trying to serve. So how do you consider gender norms, healthcare access, and stigma when tailoring knowledge dissemination strategies and clinical interventions for the communities that you are working with? And I think we'll hand that one over to Dr. Logi.
Sure, and I'm sure my colleagues have lots to add. But I think one thing is to think, who is the audience? So is the audience a community who's marginalized and stigmatized? And am I tailoring my knowledge production with and for the communities that participated in the research, for instance, that are experiencing stigma? So I was part of a panel at 7:45 a.m. yesterday. That was very early, but it was on participatory methodologies. And we were sharing, you know, we've done comic books, we've done digital stories, we've done movies, we've done a lot of different creative arts-based ways of sharing, and we did a song, many songs actually, to share knowledge back, infographics, parties, forums, so things that are fun. Because I think what Jessica mentioned, nobody wants to read the articles or, if we weren't, or someone said, I was really going to read your academic articles, like, you know, that is not an academic. So I think if the goal is engage communities, make things with them that are fun. We did a project with Black Coalition for AIDS Prevention called Transcending Love, and we had like an art show and a panel and posters, and we handed out decks of cards of artwork. You know, and if it's policymakers, it's a little bit different. So you can think about, you know, working at the beginning with the WHO, with the UN, with ministries of health, and answering policy-relevant questions and perhaps sharing back policy briefs. There's a lot of different kinds of articles you can read that, sorry, that you can write that people will pick up, like comments, policy implication articles. And I say, if you're trying to reduce stigma through your work, then you engage health providers or police or whoever it is that you're reducing stigma with. And you can also use participatory methods. We've done that with screening music videos about stigma reduction and, you know, sharing infographics. So I think it's about knowing who your audience is and if there's somebody who you want to reduce stigma with. There is many evidence-based, you know, there's a science of stigma reduction, there's a lot of evidence-based approaches to do that. And I do think it requires creativity and thinking out of the box, and also investing time and money and hiring artists too. So we hired like artists to create So we hired like artists to create comic books for our research, for instance. We've hired musicians to create songs. We've, you know, we've invested in the knowledge mobilization, but also understanding that it will look different for who your target audience is.
Yeah, Dr. McCready, how have you found integrating strategies for the communities that you work with?
Similarly to Carmen, like lots of different, you know, arts-based, but, but I also think sometimes from the perspective of the organizations and the agencies that we partner with, sometimes traditional academic publications are also very important to, as a way to signal to others that the work that, that we are doing in those spaces, in those organizations, is important. So it's, it's, it's important for us to sort of legitimize the sex and gender-based or integrated work that we're doing through academic publications or publications that are professional. That really underscores the importance and legitimizes the work that we're doing. But I was also thinking, you know, another issue I was thinking about, I don't know if anybody has an opinion about, of just like, well, how do you use knowledge dissemination to actually push communities or other academics to be more inclusive of sort of sex/gender science? Or how do you use knowledge dissemination not necessarily? On the one hand, you want to take into account what the sort of norms are around, you know, sex and gender. But on the other hand, you may want to be pushing those communities to be sort of inclusive, or you may be pushing them to sort of incorporate sex and gender science in ways that they hadn't necessarily done. So I'm also thinking about that in terms of knowledge mobilization, that on the one hand, we want to sort of think of it as a way that doesn't, that takes into account sort of the norms of the audiences that we're presenting to. And on the other hand, I feel like as sort of social justice and equity-minded scholars, we might actually want to push sometimes those same audiences towards, or in the name of being more socially just. So I don't know if anybody has thoughts about that.
Yeah, I have some, some sort of thoughts that hopefully are not too tangential, but, you know, one thing that I've been thinking about in terms of engaging people and a lot of the division that I think sometimes, we've seen recently in the United States, right? Huge division on these topics. I wonder if, you know, we need to think more about the difference between calling in and calling out. So, you know, when you call someone out, if they then agree with you, they have to agree that they were wrong, which agreeing that you're wrong isn't, isn't a problem, depending on how the person pointed out that you were wrong. Like, that is a stupid idea because of this. If the person says, agrees with you, now they had to agree they were stupid, right? And I think that sort of, the idea of, okay, so this is, this is Tina Fey, Tina, one of Tina Fey's rules to life that she learned from improv. I think her number one rule, rule to life is yes and. And so this is the idea that if somebody puts forward something, makes a suggestion, says something, you don't start with no, you start with yes and. So it's sort of like, okay, I see where you're coming from on that. However, let me, you know, give you some new information that maybe you didn't have that might change your perspective, right? Whereas if you go with no, you're wrong. So I think kind of the idea of like how I've sort of touched like weasel thinking about gender and sexual, sex, sex diversity, not like having sex, but like, you know, like your chromosome diversity into basic science is sort of saying like, well, let me help you, let's look at your project and let's think about how, how, you know, sex or sex hormones or epigenetic changes could affect this. And let's think about ways to incorporate in sort of this inclusive idea. And I think, you know, communicating results instead of like jamming them down people's throats, which is sometimes my temptation. Like, you know, but, you know, putting it into a perspective or a lens or meeting them at where they are at that moment and then saying, okay, come on with me, you know.
Just add one quick thing to Lance's point and to your point as well, is we can't underestimate the power of high-quality publications as well. I encourage you all after this to look yourself up on Sage policy profiles. I was blown away to see how many policy documents have cited our team's work and I'm sure all of your work. And you can see from WHO, UN, I was like, wow, people actually, you know, it's interesting that there isn't necessarily, I didn't have any idea about this until recently, but our work does, it is used to inform policy. But also to your point, there are so many ways to engage in constructive conversations. And I think more of what we need to do needs to be like that. For instance, one of the projects we did in Kenya, we had the young, the young adolescents, 10 to 14, present their recommendations from the research to community leaders. And we had them do actions that required no additional resources. So it was really amazing to see what can happen when you have people access people with more power. And so sometimes our role as academics is to create the opportunity for, for somebody in the, in the study or participants to be able to communicate with people who have more access to power.
Yeah, and I think something that we can think about too is if we're getting a strong reaction back, it might be worth us doing some reflection over our approach, right? So still, even if we're not getting it delivered in a flowery way, maybe that's when it's extra important to listen a little bit more, right? So yeah, thank you for all of those comments. So we'll move into our final section here, practical implementation and future directions. So there's been significant uptake of sex and gender considerations across research pillars in Canada over the past five to 10 years, which have definitely been prompted by funding agencies' requirement to explicitly include this within applications. So what advocacy efforts have been successful in shifting these funding priorities towards sex and gender research? And what gaps have you identified require some additional attention? And I think we'll go to Dr. Rueda to start this one off.
I think there are many great things to highlight. One, it comes from affected communities and their advocacy. So definitely the fact that our community leaders that are advocating for sex and gender and other equity initiatives definitely is extremely important. Another is all the concerted efforts like intentional, for example, the Institute of Sex and Gender, many other policies that universities, governments implemented across the country. So definitely that intentionality helped to have a more inclusive approach. What I, what I identified in the gaps, I would say there are three things. More transdisciplinary research. I think we cannot, like silos are, are undermine the answer to complex problems. So in this case, if I may use the example of Manitoba, so we have a different epidemiology compared to Canada. So while in Canada, the most overrepresented in the new HIV infections are GBMSM, in Manitoba is mostly cis men and cis women. But in that, in Manitoba in particular, there are many social, structural, additional complexities that affect differently men and women. So for example, women experience more intimate partner violence, men experience more street violence. So all those nuances require different set of expertise. So in that case, I would say foster more transdisciplinary research. I think CHR with the new call of equity that our group benefited from that. But it's a, it's a first step to push and to stimulate transdisciplinary research. The second thing is more intentional representation of most affected provinces and communities. So probably because I'm from Manitoba, but I think in the landscape of HIV research, we need to look at the prairie provinces where they are heavily overrepresented. We contribute to 40% of the cases in Canada. So I think being intentional in those, those things. The third one will be controversial. I don't say it from a political perspective, but I just want to use it as an example. I don't understand why the recent, some politic, some policies, documents published by the government of Canada are removing the word women. So my question is, do we have misogynistic approach to those policies? So it's, for me, has been shocking when I researched some publications from the government of Canada and some provinces and intentionally has been removing the word women. Why? So that is an invitation to reflect on that part. And the second piece of the question, of the comment is, I personally think we need to be more self-reflective. I, we cannot think, when we look at the US, we sometimes we say, this situation is crazy and so on. And I think we all agree that it sounds, it's crazy. However, my invitation is how we self-reflect that this is here, is not there. Like, look at the elections that happened here. Around 50% of the population wanted a change. So I'm not talking about the political, liberal, or conservative. What I'm talking is when we as academics become with moral superiority and start blaming people as wrong, as crazy, as irrational. And why don't we self-reflect what is happening out there that we are not able to read the communities? So I think that challenge, and I think we need to self-reflect as academia on ourselves, what is happening, how we listen better to communities, why we are failing, or why people are discontent with some, some, some strategies.
And I think I jumped ahead here with the audience question, but it's, it's good to already have your, your feedback in this area. But yeah, moving right into the destruction that we've been witnessing from several institutions south of the border. And so thinking about how this will impact the sustainability and progress of HIV, sex, and gender research. So we will throw this one over to Dr. McCready. So what are your most immediate concerns surrounding recent policy changes? And what impacts have you or your colleagues already experienced?
I actually want to go back to the, to the previous question issue we were discussing, just because I think there are a number. I think the landscape around a lot of the policy changes and some of the debates that we're having around inclusiveness, around sex and gender, science are competing slash murky. I was telling the panel, there's, there was an article in Canadian Affairs newspaper earlier this year that, and the title was, "How inclusiveness, How An Inclusiveness Agenda Is Undermining The Female Health Research." Researchers say a requirement for health research to be inclusive has made it harder to receive, to receive funding for essential female-specific studies. And summarize that some Canadian scientists say, "A requirement for health research to be inclusive has made it harder to receive grant funding for female-specific health studies." Ironically, this emphasis on inclusiveness is a response to a historical bias against female-specific studies that still exist today. So I think one of the things that, it's interesting, sort of paradoxical, is as our knowledge and our ways of operationalizing sex/gender science has improved and is also, in many cases, moved beyond the binary, you could say that in order for us to do inclusive sex/gender research, it's actually going to require more resources for us to do that. But in fact, in some cases, our resources have shrunk or they've stayed the same within, for instance, the Institutes for Gender and Health. I can tell you from being on that institutional advisory board, we're increasingly, we were increasingly being called to partner with other advisory boards to try to bring more money to make our pot of money sort of larger. If there was a call for a specific Institute for Gender and Health research proposal. So I think that this is a big concern and a dilemma for, for me. This is also played out, and many people feel that the inclusion of men under the category of gender has then taken away from sort of resources that would be for women's health and for a specific sort of health inequities that involve women. I've also seen over time that the, the commitment to a men's health agenda has sort of waxed and waned and sort of come and gone depending on who we have in our leadership. So I, my concern is that we're equating being inclusive of sex/gender science with a loss for particular groups, that someone's going to be a loser in our efforts to be inclusive. So I'm wondering also what the thoughts of, of folks are about that. Is that, so it makes kind of like, it's not, inclusiveness isn't a zero-sum game, or it's, it's that, it's, it's going to kind of result in sort of, somebody's going to lose and there's going to be sort of inequalities that are actually maintained through being inclusive, ironically.
I think that comes up in a lot of systems where it's put more on the individual rather than the overall system. I think a lot of us got rid of our plastic straws, thinking that we were saving a lot of turtles, and there's still a lot of plastic in the oceans. Not saying we need the plastic straws, but just thinking about how do we change larger systems so that people don't feel like there isn't a scarcity mindset, rather than we don't have to compete for all of the resources, there's enough resources to go around. But of course, that's not always the case. So maybe in those situations, finding who you can partner with and try to be strategic with the money that is available to try to do as much good as possible with, with what's there while you're working on hopefully changing the systems to better support all populations.
Well, and I'd just say also that the strategy, the way this relates to the strategy and obviously with Donald Trump is to just eliminate trans and to reduce actually the inclusiveness of gender. And to just make it sort of male/female, and therefore reduce any possibility of putting money towards research, justice, equity for gender diversity and gender diverse sort of identifications in the United States. And my concern is that other sort of countries, including Canada, will begin to look to that as a model or as a way of solving this dilemma. I think that, and then there are other sort of policies, I just will just mention around sort of Saskatoon and about the, that the fact that, that children under 16 need parental consent in schools to identify gender other than what's sort of listed on their official school record. There's been lots of sort of debate about that. But my concern is that actually that, that the way to solve this problem for some is to reduce the complexity, to reduce actually, and almost eliminate and not pay attention to the sex/gender science that we've had that have actually contributed to advancing the field and what we know.
Okay, I, I, I think, yeah, I think you raised some really excellent points, and I, I really agree with you. And I find, you know, this is, this has been Trump's message, is that by allowing for gender And I find, you know, this has been Trump's message, is that by allowing for gender diversity, it's somehow diluting, you know, women's rights and women's identities, which is, I mean, I think completely ridiculous. But I think, you know, one way that we can address, so this is a fundamental problem. If there's finite resources, how do you allocate them, you know, in a way that's equitable? And I think one of the ways that we can do this, thinking about our funding models, is, you know, there are panels. The people who are on the panels making the decision about grants getting funded are people who have been successful in the past at getting their grants funded, right? That's how you make it onto panel. And, am I using the right Canadian term, panel? Yeah, it's not, okay, sorry, sorry, I had a Canadian-American moment there. And so I think we need better representation. We need, you know, it's just like Winston said at the opening plenary, we need people in those positions of power who look like us, right? So I think, you know, fostering and having leadership programs that are bringing research leaders up who are, you know, very intimately aware of gender diversity issues, sex differential for basic science, things like that, making sure that these people are brought forward and into positions of leadership so that they can be sitting on panel and helping to make these decisions and reviewing these grants is important. Because of course, you think what you're doing, all of us think what we are doing is very important and should be funded. So you read a grant, it really speaks to you because you really get the issues, you give it a high score. And I think we just need to make sure that there is adequate representation. One way to ensure more equity in funding is making sure that we have good representation on panel.
And I would just like to agree and say that, you know, Daryl attended an amazing plenary today, and the whole time I was listening to the amazing work of PrEP. I was thinking about how USAID and PEPFAR has cut all access to PrEP. So all of our colleagues, at least we're working with in Kenya, Uganda, have lost access to PrEP for sex workers, for sexually diverse and gender diverse folks, for adolescent girls and young women. And so it's, these changes are having a real impact on people's lives right now. Even I was in Jamaica two weeks ago, and even though they lost USAID funding and they got USAID funding back, no one has, no one is there to distribute the funding. So they actually haven't gotten any funding since January, and the office is studying and they're like, we don't know where we're getting this funding from, because there's nobody to answer our emails. So I think that there is this huge impact, and part of it, what happens is people try to protect themselves and protect what is theirs. And I've seen that. I was in Barcelona at the Women in HIV meeting, and someone was joking and saying, well, they better not come after my research. You know, I don't do trans stuff, but the thing is, they shouldn't come after any of our research. All of our research is equally valuable, and it shouldn't be that there's some safe research and some not safe research, that we all should be protecting the fact that science is important, and if people are funded to do something, then someone thought it was valuable. So it can't just be like, I'm going to protect mine, and, you know, oh, you know, they got confused about transgenic mice. Really, don't just defund me. But that doesn't mean that they should defund anybody's research who's doing work with actual trans people. So I think that the scarcity mentality, and it can actually put people fighting for, you know, as Lance said, these perceived limited resources, can actually have people become less inclusive and less committed to social justice.
Yeah, those are really, really good points, and trying to think about how to move forward in whether it's this current climate or just in general, in sex and gender equity within HIV research. So our next question is a question for everybody here. So what resources can you suggest to people in the audience for further learning or support within these areas? And that could be finding supportive groups for scientists in underrepresented groups. That could also be learning modules from, for example, C I H R has sex and gender-based modules that are really excellent. So this will be up for you guys to contribute to. We're good. But also, I'll pass it over to Dr. Logi. So yeah, today we've discussed sex and gender equity across HIV research landscape, highlighting the wins and providing some mitigating strategies for addressing some of the challenges. So thinking broadly about sex and gender equity in HIV research, what resources can you suggest participants access for further learnings?
Sure. I've just written down a few, and I'm sure my colleagues have a lot of ideas. Canadian Public Health Association has an HIV and STBBI intersectional stigma reduction training. So if you go to C P H A's website, there's a lot of amazing stigma reduction training resources. The Lenn School of Hygiene and Tropical Medicine has a total facility stigma reduction approach manual. That's amazing. There's a lot of S G B A plus articles written, including Kara Tenenbaum's work. There's a lot of, I'd say, black feminism and intersectionality. So if you haven't read the Combehe River collective statement, it's only eight pages. Read the whole thing. You know, Black Feminist Thought by Patricia Hill Collins, Kimberley Crenshaw, Bell Hooks. Also, there's some great work on data feminism, and then of course, decolonial work and indigenous knowledge. There's a lot of people writing, depending on your area of where you live and what particular type of science and research questions you have. So those are just a start, but I know my colleagues are very brilliant and likely have a lot to add.
I would add the P C Center for, I don't remember the exact name, but the center that they have about sex and gender, they have excellent, incredible resources that I constantly look at. They develop guidelines, infographics, like modules in training. It's excellent.
Oh, the only thing I would add is I think Angela Kaida and the team did a sort of wonderful listening tour as part of her being ushered in as the director for the Institutes for Gender and Health. And they developed a really good, pretty comprehensive research priority plan that's called Strengths to Solutions: Advancing Sex and Gender Science for Healthy Futures, that really lays out prioritize, lays out a sort of a plan and ways that sort of researchers can integrate sex and gender science into their research. Really sort of breaks down and gives some really tangible ways of approaching intersectionality, thinking about sort of gender in basic science, how to think about sort of priorities and funding. And so I really encourage you, in addition to the modules that are mentioned here in the comments from I G H, I encourage you to take a look at this research priority plan. It's not too long. It's twenty-something pages, and there are lots of good references in there, too.
Well, that's awesome. So we are going to compile the discussions from today, and those who are interested will send that to you, so you don't have to furiously write anything down right now. But yeah, lots of good comments on the screen as well, supporting the folks in your community doing that work already, and sharing their experience and expertise. It's an excellent suggestion as well. And so now we're going to move into the Q and A. So we do have time for the audience to ask our panelists some questions. If anything really came to mind during some of our discussions today, I know we only had an hour and a half, so lots of things I'm sure we weren't able to touch on or get as in-depth as participants might want. So there's two microphones within the room here, so we'll take some time as people make it to the front.
My question might be a little complex, so please give me a little bit of grace as I try to explain it. I'm a community health worker. I work at a local ASO and two S LGBTQ plus youth-focused, not youth, that's the other volunteer thing, two S LGBTQ plus health-focused organization. And our funding will often be based off of folks like yours' data. The data you collect directly informs the way that our funding will often look, because the government will often turn to your data to make choices. There's a lot of struggles with the way that this affects the reality of our organizations. One way could be that the, that health needs or your organization's health data will often need boxes of specific identification. I often think of that in the terms of like, how that's affected PrEP or vaccinations, rather than a self-identified risk factor. Is there any changes that you've been seeing made in data that focuses on behavior versus identity-based research? And you touched on this a little bit, which I really appreciated, but how does your creation of data, creation of research projects in that work, when do you think of your local organizations, when you think of the folks who will be affected by that data in terms of how they're going to actually support the people who you're researching?
I think Dr. Uraida might be able to speak to this fairly well.
Thank you for your question. I think when we are designing projects, I will share my personal approach, which doesn't mean that is the correct one. I think there are different ones. We, as researchers, constantly try to read and study about the topic, so we have one knowledge that we think this is the gap. In addition to that, what we do is, we always, in our research team, that is the reason I emphasize a lot about transdisciplinary research. We have policymakers, we have decision-makers, we have community members, we have affected communities, we have different disciplines, like we have engineers, mathematicians, social scientists, basic scientists, we have all sorts of disciplines. And that creates an incredible richness for the research question. So I would say, in a short answer, I would say, most of the research questions that we propose in research grants comes from the communities or from what I call frontline workers. So in that sense, it's guaranteed that the research that we do quickly has translation into policy. So one is including communities. The second one is, when I talk about including communities, it means through the entire project cycle. So it's not just, I ask you when we are designing questions. It means, for example, with our peer research team, we have had in three years and a half, eighty-five meetings. So the first years, we met every week, and now for research constraint, we meet every two weeks. With policymakers, we meet very frequent. So it depends, and each audience requires different approaches. So that means that they know, they participate in research, so peers collect data, they can choose whatever they want, their role is. With policymakers, we constantly develop with all the team, the questionnaires. So we have a draft, and we bring them, we discuss together, so that takes time. So that's the reason I was mentioning. This requires a lot of time, open space, having, I was talking about tough conversations, because we have tough conversations, and we have the conversation, I will give you a short example. When we talk about ethnicity, so we have members from black communities, and there was a question that one person, one peer said, no, don't call it black, call it people of color. And the person who is black said, I don't want to be called people of color, I want to be black. So it was, and it was a very nice conversation that happened there. And this is a very simple example, but it comes from every single question that we ask, having this tough conversation. It doesn't mean that everything is tough, it's just not to shut up and say, this is not what we are going to do. Same with the analysis, same with the interpretation of the results. And I emphasize the point of sharing the results before we publish the data, because we feed the policymakers in real time. So they ask us, we need a modeling to project the HIV cases in the province in the next ten years, can you do that? Sure, we will do it quickly. So many of the research findings have been feeding the policymakers a year, two years before it's published. So it's also as a researcher saying, what is the priority for people? Is my personal gain, or is the benefit of the communities that in this case are affected? So what I would say is, having an entire cycle where people participate in every single step of the research, I don't know if the word is secure, but facilitate the research findings uptake.
Out of curiosity, when you say policymakers, are you including ASOs and folks who are working with people on the ground as people who are privileged to that information?
So those is what I call frontline workers. So it's those who interact directly with community members. So when I talk about policy and decision-makers, I'm talking about high level. So who makes the decision? Who makes the decision, within the organization, within the government? And you also need to be mindful in, I will share a very little thing. When I, not related with HIV, but when I started in researching prisons, I wanted to change the world. And then going to prisons every day, I learned that I just like focus on one thing. And for five years, we did the research, we went every day, and working with people in prison, working with security members, with administrators, with lawyers, with whoever. After five years of doing lobbying and those kind of things, they changed one simple thing, how we screen for symptoms in prisons. They changed it in the entire prison system. That day, I learned that I need to be focused. So there are hundred problems, but we cannot solve all of them. So what are the priorities that we are going to focus on, step by step? And don't take the setbacks in a negative way, just continue, continue, continue.
Yeah, and I think kind of building on that is, when you are doing this work with community, it is going to take longer, and it should, right? So not being in a rush, which is hard from an academic point sometimes, but knowing that you're going to get a lot better results that are going to help the communities you're trying to serve, right? And of course, there are some institutional issues that arise, and there's definitely going to be times where you're speaking and you're not being heard, right? So that also can be quite slow, but sometimes you do just have to unfortunately wait too long and keep speaking up, right? Keep using your voice as best as you can, and hopefully over time, it's heard. But finding, finding the people to help do that together, right? Can't just be one person, having lots of voices at the table is the way to do that, right? So I think with that, we'll start to close our session. So we do have a very quick feedback form, and you have the choice to also get some results from the session today. So if you're interested in hearing more on this discussion, if there were things that we weren't able to tackle today but you're interested in, we'd love to hear about that so that we can design some lunch and learn sessions in the future. But I just really want to thank our panelists today. I think it's a really important conversation to have in all areas of research, but especially within HIV research. So big thank you to all of our panelists.